And call us to order. Welcome to the September 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Maggie L. Walker Governor's School, Regional School Board. Let's see. Let's start with a moment of silence if we can. Thank you. If you're able, would you please rise and we'll do the pledge of allegiance, then I don't know where there's a flag. Okay.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this brings us to our introductions. And if we could, because we've got a little different setup this time around, I think maybe it's going to be best if we go around the outside and then work our way in. So, yes, thank you.
Barbara Marshall, Board Clerk.
David Borges, Chief Technology Officer, Maggie Walker.
Good morning. Max Smith, Assistant Director, Maggie Walker.
Melody Hackney, Superintendent, Hopewell City.
Linda Heissler, School Board, Hopewell.
Betty Haney, School Board, Genway County.
Sarah Barber, New Tech School Board.
Valerie Ayers, Calhoun County School Board.
Mike Hill, Superintendent, Hanover County.
John Axel, Head of the School Board.
Jeremy Railey, Superintendent, Duke.
Joan Wright, School Board, Cleveland County.
Bob Lowery, Director, Maggie Walker Governor's School.
Arvin Hall, Board Member, King and Queen County Schools.
Jill Andrews, School Board, Prince George.
Lisa Penny, Superintendent, Prince George Public Schools.
Good morning. Carol Carter, Superintendent for King and Queen County Public Schools.
I'm Leah Tremblay from Colonial High School Board. I'm filling in for my colleague, Dr. Adams.
Martha Harris, Chalk City County School Board.
Good morning. Lynn Flavich, Gifted Coordinator, Richmond City.
And I'm George Full. I'm the Coordinator for Gifted in Tuscaloosa County Public Schools.
Nice to meet you. I believe we had Mr. Pritchett join us from Petersburg. Is that correct?
Yes, I did. Ken Pritchett from Pittsburgh.
Thank you, one and all. So Board Members, we have Ms. Ogburn, who represents Enrico County, who needs to join us virtually today. And so I would entertain a motion from anybody to allow her to do so.
Submit.
Second. Second by Mr. Axel. Thank you. Board Members, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are we allowed to pick at her when she comes along?
I think, Mr. Axel, it would be expected for you to pick at just about anybody.
You'd be torturing him if you didn't do that.
There you are. That's great.
I think she gets to stay at home. We have to come in all of them.
For everybody's information, Ms. Ogburn is on a Zoom call right here with us. You can't see her, but we're just monitoring her votes and making sure that they're cast on her behalf. Thank you. So next, Board Members, that brings us to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I immediately approve the agenda.
Mrs. Barber, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Haney, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So Board Members, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you so very much. Now on to the minutes. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there any questions or comments on the minutes? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
We've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We're gonna, sorry, I couldn't determine. Oh, Ms. Harris, so very sorry. So we've got a motion and a second to approve our minutes from the previous meeting. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Thank you. So I see that we don't have any recognition set up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Not today.
And public comments, I believe we did not receive any public comments before the period closed yesterday. There was a comment that was circulated after. That comment will be considered at our next meeting. So just for everybody's knowledge, but we have no public comments, so we are just rolling along today, which brings us to our Directors' Reports. So very happy to have you here with us.
I am very happy to be here. And if I could just take maybe 10 seconds of personal time, I just want to thank everybody for your thoughts, your prayers, your cards. I can feel it. Everything is going well. I've had two treatments out of six so far. By every indication, it's going away. I had a, it's probably too much information, but there was a softball-sized tumor in my armpit. I can't find it anymore. My doctor can't find it. I'm sure it's there somewhere, but this stuff is working. And he told me there was a 60% chance that by Christmas I would be completely cured and be done with it. So hearing the word cure versus survival is good. I certainly attribute that, not only because of modern medicine, but the thoughts and the prayers, I can feel it. And when I'm sitting there getting infusions, I've got my laptop and oftentimes I'm, I spent my birthday at the hospital last time getting the infusion and I'm looking at all the birthday wishes. That made the six hours go by pretty, not so bad. Not so bad. The nurses brought me candy. It was cool. So in any way, thank you so much, everybody. Before I get started on my regular updates, I do want to certainly recognize our host's junior achievement. They have been wonderful to allow us to use this space as we kind of figure out our growing pains and figure out some things back at school. And I certainly wanted to give them an opportunity to tell a little bit about what they do here and why they have this amazing space here in Enrico County.
Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Boyle, the President of Junior Achievement of Central Virginia. And we just want to welcome you to JA Finance Park. I know many of you have been here before and know what we do. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but just a real quick overview maybe of how we've been dealing with the last year and a half, too. Typically, when students join us here at JA Finance Park, they come here, they experience learning, and they learn things like water bills exist and clothes and shoes are expensive, and they learn about insurance and investments, all sorts of college and career and credential planning. And, you know, it's a classroom program that culminates in a visit here typically. And so that program is now virtual. We are looking at virtual throughout the fall, and we do plan to open it back up in the spring, fingers crossed. JA Finance Park is a classroom program. We have over 20 other JA programs that focus on financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work readiness. And they all align with Virginia SOLs as well as the profile of a Virginia graduate. On your tables, you will see QR codes. That leads to a website that we created called JA Virtual that has probably over 100 lessons, maybe, that are delivered by local volunteers. And as you know, we rely heavily on volunteers to deliver our programs. And so shifting over the last year, we have found ways to keep them engaged and found ways to continue to serve your students. We're really grateful and fortunate to have partnerships with most if not all school districts represented here, as well as hundreds of local and regional businesses. And we just really look forward to being able to serve your students again in person. I think, again, in the spring is what we're hoping for. But just want to thank you, welcome you. Cynthia Pinalio is the Director of this facility, and she will stick around afterwards if you have any questions. I do encourage you to visit our JA Career Center, which is located in the back corner here. It is a fun, hands-on learning space for middle and high schoolers to explore careers and learn that the choices they make today impact their futures tomorrow. So thank you once again, and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just want to bring you a quick update on kind of how things are going at Maggie Walker. We are open for business, live and in person, along with everybody else. We welcome 756 students. We still have a couple more slots that we're filling with some waitlist kids. It included the largest freshman class that we've ever had at Maggie Walker of 208 kids. And the reason for that's two reasons. One, sometimes there's little bubbles that work through different districts with numbers. But we also had a few kids, more than usual, who chose to go back to their home districts following the year and a half of virtual learning. And that was to be expected and, you know, kind of is what it is. But it certainly is challenging us with having a freshman class that large, but it's pretty exciting and they're very enthusiastic. They're great kids. We're very happy to have them. I also do want to give credit to a much-maligned group of people, and that's your transportation directors. I know what you're dealing with, and of course, we're part of that. And it is, it's a miracle that we've done as well as we have, and it's happened because of the work that they've done to make this happen. The first couple of days, of course, were a little challenging, as they are at everybody's school, but we're now consistently getting the buses off of our bus lot by about 25 after 3:00, which is about 15 minutes after dismissal, and that's not so bad. One of the challenges we have is that a lot more parents are driving their kids. So our back parking lot is just gridlocked, and I've communicated to the parents, and they understand. They don't like it, but they understand that that's just kind of the deal right now because once Lombardi Street backs up, there's no place to go, and you're relying on the good nature and generosity of someone to let you in, which doesn't always happen. So we're kind of working through that, but all in all, transportation has done a really good job, and your directors have been very responsive and helpful with us, and I certainly thank them for that. And all indication is the classes went smoothly. And I hate, I very hesitate to say this because I feel like I'm jinxing myself, but as of this morning, week, two and a half weeks into the school year, we have yet to have one confirmed case of COVID amongst our kids, which, which I attribute to several things. We have a very, very high vaccination rate.
Everyone is here.
That's why I said I hesitated to say it. But our kids are doing a great, your kids are doing a great job with wearing the masks. They're socially distancing when they can. They're eating lunch outside when they can. Today may be a little bit of a challenge, but we've got a big building and we can spread them out. And they're following instructions, and they see the value. One of the things that we've preached since the beginning is to be able to keep this thing going, which we all like, we all love. We've got to do the best we can to keep ourselves safe. And the closest we've had, also, we also don't have a football team. And I know that's, that's, I want to talk into some of your superintendents, that the football programs have been a way where it is spread, and that's, we don't have that. So we're kind of lucky on those respects. To the best of my knowledge, all of our staff are vaccinated except for one who has a very good legitimate medical reason to not do so. And as far as I can tell, the vast majority of our kids do it as, are as well. So I think that's helped as well. But we are taking it kind of day by day, sometimes hour by hour, but so far it has been miraculous that we've been able to operate the way we have. I also want to publicly thank our school nurse. Alyssa Shapiro has done an amazing job of managing potential exposures and how to manage that and get information to people who need it. She has just done a fabulous job with that, and we are very, very grateful that this board chose to support that position because certainly at this time right now with all those kids back on campus, no disrespect at all to Mr. Smith, Dr. Williams, myself. I would be terrified if the three of us were the ones that were having to manage this in comparison to what she is able to do. So we thank you for that. Virtual middle school information nights are starting. About two-thirds of your districts are doing them virtually. About one-third are doing them in person, and we are able to accommodate both. We've worked with the Gifted Coordinators who've given us that information. So if you're having, I always call it like a high school opportunity night at your middle school. If it's in person, we'll be there. If it's virtual, I've got a package I can send with a narrated PowerPoint and good links to information pages. And we can also do, one, a couple districts are doing live, live virtual nights where they're doing them through either Google Teams or Microsoft Teams, whatever, Zoom, and we're able to participate in that as well. So one way or another, throughout the month of October, we will be able to accommodate whatever your needs may be. And then we're still kind of wrestling with how we want to do our info nights in November. They tend to be incredibly people-heavy events, so we may do them virtually again this year, but we haven't gotten that far yet. We're still just kind of working through the other, the other things that are right in front of us. Some good news is the class of 2022 had 15 students that earned a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist recognition. And from there, there'll be, it's about 15,000 semifinalists across the country, and then they'll be whittled down to finalists and then ultimately ones that win scholarships. And we traditionally often have a finalist or two, and every once in a while, we get a scholarship winner. We had, I think we had two last year. So life goes on despite COVID, and they're, they're doing what they need to do. And I've got a list there on the agenda that has the names of the students as well as their home districts, and you can certainly review that in your, at your leisure. And then one thing I'm really excited to announce is that we are going to have our Fall Festival next Friday, but we're doing it a little bit differently this year. One of the pieces of feedback that we got when we did our equity study is that some of the kids who don't have transportation get left out because this thing traditionally hadn't started until about 4:00 and ran until about 7:00. So instead, this year, we're starting it at 2:00, and students will have an hour or so to be able to wander around the booths and such before they have to get on a bus if it's a situation where they don't have transportation. And that was a direct result of a request that they had, was like, we want to go, but we just can't, we can't get there. My mom is 45 minutes away. I live, you know, out in one of our districts that's kind of on the fringes, and they just couldn't be there. So we're very happy that the PTA has been able to accommodate that. We are doing it, it's outside, but it's kind of COVID, COVID-sensitive outside. We're not doing a lot of food this year. It has to be prepackaged, so that'll kind of move things along. And we're sort of shifting the focus from fundraising for the clubs as much as it is exposure and recruitment for the clubs. So it's going to be kind of a club recruitment type thing, not a whole lot of active food sales going on. And of course, it'll still be the stage where students can perform, and that's personally the best part of the Fall Festival is hearing the kids perform. So that's kind of what we have going on. If I move on to the coming events, you can see them there. I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. I just talked about Fall Festival. We're also doing a blood drive at school on Friday, October 1st. And this year, we're going to do it a little bit differently. We're opening it to the public, as long as they are vetted and we can run them through our screening process when they come on campus. But we're going to allow parents, and if there's folks that want to come and give blood, there is a tremendous shortage right now in the central Virginia area. I'm getting texts and emails about every 20 minutes, but unfortunately, I can't help them this time around. But there is a need for blood drive and photography, or staff and underclassmen photographs are coming up, so our yearbook will be nice and stocked up with the ripe times pictures as opposed to kids sending in selfies, which is what we did last year. And then, of course, we have the PSAT coming up in October as well. One other thing I would put on there, we're experimenting with, the students felt very strongly about wanting a homecoming dance. Well, that's just an impossibility inside. Cannot, cannot do that. But they said, well, what if we did it outside on the track? I said, all right. You understand in mid-October, at 7:00 at night, it's going to be a little chilly, and you might not want to wear what you would normally wear to a homecoming dance. Oh, we don't care. We just want to get together and have fun. So all right. So we're going to open up the entire athletic facility, basically. We're going to bring a food truck in, well, an ice cream truck specifically is what they wanted. Have a DJ.
An ice cream truck.
You know?
Woo, okay.
Sir, I can, I can lead them to think, but they're going to ultimately, I thought I had them when I'm like, just look at the historic temperatures of 9:00 on October 16th. I didn't, they didn't care. They're, they're, and you certainly know this from your own districts, they're desperate for familiarity. And so we're going to try to do it and see how it goes. There's not going to be a rain date, so it's going to be a one-off, and if they can make it, because the rain day would just push it further and further into the fall, which is going to get worse. But we're going to give it a shot. They're, they're, they really want it, and I personally think they've earned it, they deserve it. If we can make it happen for them, we'll, we'll do what we can. And then our next Regional School Board meeting will be Thursday, October 21st, at normal time, and we will be meeting here again. We are going to try to get ourselves back on campus because I know that's kind of where we should be, but we have to figure out some logistics. As you can see, the amount of space that we have here and the number of people, 153, is just not really a viable option. So we're taking a look at some other spots. And also the commons, we were able to do that once, but it's not, acoustically not a great place, and there's vending machines and a lot of people walking around. It's just not the best environment. So we're going to work on that and get that straight. And then the last item of my report is just a reminder that December 1st is when we need the division enrollment plans, and we will send those things out. I don't know, Barbara, you don't have them here today, do you?
No.
No, okay. So next month, we'll have, we'll send them out. But we'll start planning based on the number of slots that your districts choose to occupy and fill, and then that also drives our budget. So it's important that December 1st deadline is, is important for me to be able to have a budget that you'll be able to take a look at as soon as we get back off the winter break. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that is the extent of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lowery. Board Members, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Lowery about his, his report? If not, then we'll move forward with unfinished business, which I believe brings us around to our strategic plan.
It does. And we have made a lot of progress on the strategic plan, and not all of it is reflected on this document, as some of it was, was brought to my attention after I filled it out. But there's a lot of really good things going on right now, specifically in the area of building, maintenance, and security. We've updated our camera system. That was completed this summer, and we are now back to a system that works and that is supported. The one we had was software in it, was no longer supported. So when a camera died, it just gradually died, and that, you know, did not provide us with the security coverage that we needed. So that's been taken care of. We have a new security officer, Mr. Michael Jordan. Unfortunate name for him, but he, or very fortunate. He is, he is outstanding. He has got decades of security experience, has done a really good job with us in terms of kind of professionalizing everything that we're doing. Has developed a great partnership with the, the local fire department, police department, rescue. He's, he's on top of his game, and we are, we are very happy to have him there, and your kids are safer with him being there as well. We've also, in the finance area, we brought our, a lot of our stuff online. We're starting to kind of crawl into the 21st century. So we have been able to look at being, putting our field trip processing stuff online and bringing things that would normally paper. All, all of our fees are paid online now. Very few people are bringing checks into school, and that's worked out really well as a way just to kind of just reduce contact. Also, it just makes it a lot easier on us when we're moving money around electronically. But the area that I'm particularly pleased with, that we've made tremendous progress, is in the area, that first, that first goal about creating an environment that gives all of our students a sense of belonging and welcoming. And Dr. Lisa Williams in particular, along with Mr. Smith and Ms. DeGroot, have really put some effort into staff development, bringing in cultural competencies so that we can meet the state requirements with something that's actually viable and robust and not just a check-the-box approach. We've partnered with Virginia Commonwealth University School of Education Office of Strategic Engagement. Dr. Josh Cole and his team have come in and provided staff development in August. And we're really making some good progress on creating that environment that every one of our children, regardless of who they are, where they are, what they look like, what they believe, everybody feels home at Maggie Walker, and that our staff and teachers are trained to be able to support that. And we've, we've made really good progress on that. And it's something that's sustainable and something that we're going to continue rolling through this year so that when the, the teacher licensure component of the cultural competencies is, is live, our teachers will be completely qualified and good to go. So that's, that's been really good news. And along the same lines on that next item there that says, or public report, I will come up with a more formal way of presenting this by November 1st. So our October School Board meeting, I'll have a, a document that we can release to the public. Of course, they could see this as well, but that'll kind of give an overview of where we are with our strategic plan, what we still need to work on, and what we've been able to kind of put behind us, and then the ones that are still active. So we will meet that policy requirement as well easily by November 1st. And I believe that's the part, that's the rest of the unfinished business.
Great, thank you, Dr. Lowery. So that is going to bring us to our consent agenda here. We've got a few different items here. Personnel, some financial reports and donations. I believe we just had one hire in personnel.
Just one in the technology specialist, if I remember correctly. That's correct.
And, and let's see, is there anything that we would need to call out and draw special attention to?
No, not in personnel. The fiscal reports are just the usual transaction register, revenue, budget for its obligation. The finance committee is meeting, I think it's next week. So we're a little bit off cycle, but by the next board meeting, we'll have, have your finance officers take a good look at everything and make sure everything is, is in order, which it should be. We balanced out fine at the end of last year. As far as I am aware, we are still waiting on audits, but our school has done everything that we are supposed to do. So the city of Richmond is working through, through that now. But by every indication, we are, we're fine. We're not, we are fiscally solvent.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When's the last, how many, oh, we've been hind in audits, or we caught up?
The last one I've seen was 18, I believe.
So we haven't had an audit since 2008?
Well, they've got them. They've got 19 and 20.
They're just not finalized.
They're just not finalized. But they've got all the information. They, there's nothing more for us to provide for them. The city of Richmond and their accounting firm just have not provided us with the final audit that we can present to the board.
Right. And Mr. Axel, I think your, your question brings up a point that we've had discussion about before, that the city of Richmond is our fiscal agent, and we are therefore at their mercy for completing this process. Much like your home divisions, your school has a portion of the overall county or city budget and financial reports that are then audited. And so there's a collaboration between both the local government and the school systems. Same thing here. And unfortunately, the city of Richmond has been behind for a number of years. I think, although we cannot confirm right now, that we have seen that the 19 audit was at least begun. I don't, I don't believe that it, I believe they've done much of the work, it's not yet finalized on 19. 18 is the last final one that we have. 20, he's saying that they've taken care of their responsibilities, and unfortunately, we're going to have to wait and see when the city finishes the rest of the work. I'm bringing this up because it has been a point of discussion within our meetings in the past that we do have an opportunity, if, if we should choose to do so, as a regional school board, to change who our fiscal agent is, which may somehow change, or not somehow, but may change the outcome of, of the timelines for audits and things like that. So just bringing this up as a reminder, don't want it to be a big discussion point, but perhaps in the future, we'll come back and readdress this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, I think it's wise. And maybe, I mean, I would suggest that we do do that.
Yes.
And one, because this has been a, I don't call it an issue, it's been long-term. I mean, it just didn't pop up yesterday.
Yeah.
And one, and number two, maybe there are some other options where the city could remain the fiscal agent, but we hired independent auditor, or we could do something like that, where we hire our own auditor.
Right.
So they report to us and they can get it to us in a more timely fashion. And put it in the budget of the Governor's School for that. So just, just a thought to where we, we may not have to make a big change. It could just be a little changed and, or somewhat of a little change.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. I would say that we don't have issues. At this point, it's a subscription. It's well beyond an issue. It's, it's, it's a repeated thing. And so that's great, that's a great thought, and we'll, we'll bring that back at some future point. Thank you, everyone, for humoring me on that. So then, let's see, donation reports, is there anything?
There's nothing on there. The one that we had from back in the spring, and then we had, let's see, it looks like we had furniture for teacher's lounge was taken out of that part of that donation.
Okay.
But that, nothing new.
And is there, Dr. Lowery, has there been any progress other than this furniture on what the school may choose to do with that large furniture?
We have, we have left that donation sort of in its own account for right now, and And I've kind of gone into it with the mentality of I want it to be spent on things that would serve the maximum number of people and not specific items. So I'm not using it to buy a new piece of equipment for a laboratory per se. But the teacher's lounge furniture, and one of the things, when we do get back on campus, if you wander around, especially on that second floor, you're going to see some real significant changes that we've made. Some cosmetic and some much deeper than cosmetics. For starters, all of our Maggie Walker memorabilia was up on the third floor, which is an area that not many go to. We've pulled all that down and put them into showcases on either side of the auditorium. So now when you come into the auditorium, which is probably one of our most used buildings, the first thing you're going to see is all of this history of Maggie Walker and of Maggie Walker High School. The teacher's lounge, like many teacher's lounges, was an accumulation of discarded items that had wandered their way down to a place and kind of all sat in one room. And Dr. Williams was appalled and said, we got to get rid of this stuff. And so we decided to spend a little bit of that money and update that area so that it would be an area where teachers would feel comfortable to want to come in, collaborate, take a break. There's popcorn machine in there, refrigerator, microwave, such. So we wanted to improve that a little bit. So those are just kind of some of the things that we're thinking about doing. But that, you know, I hesitate to use the money for anything specific because sometimes they're just little items that come up that are outside the budget that make a difference that would affect a lot of people and that's an area where we kind of have had that. Although I'm certainly open for suggestions on that. It was truly a blessing. It was.
Agreed. Thank you, Dr. Lowery. Board members, are there any questions on any of the items within the consent agenda? If not, then we'll move forward to our action items. Well, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to comment, sorry for being late, but I want to comment on what Mr. Axel I'm in agreement that we really need to look at moving forward with someone else rather than Richmond. So hopefully, we will agree that we will give the director the opportunity to look at what school division is willing to take over and become our next fiscal agent. I don't think we need to stay with Richmond any longer because as long as I've been on here and now, and Ms. Ayers also, we've dealt with this for a while. So I really do believe that we should move forward.
Right. Yes, sir. So, Dr. Lowery.
We can bring up the next superintendent steering committee, which will meet in October.
In October.
In October.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. Let's see, do we need to vote on the consent agenda?
I think you need to vote on the consent, I'm as a group.
Okay, so board members, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move for the consent agenda as presented.
Barbara, thank you for the motion. Ms. Harris, thank you. We'll get it right this time for the second. So board members, we've got a motion and a second in front of us. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. That passes. So that does bring us now to our action items. I believe we just have one item, which is new course approvals. And board members, this is the second time we've seen this. We saw this last month in August. Dr. Lowery, anything you want to mention?
No, these are just new proposed courses that have been run through the planning committee. We would try to offer them, we would offer them 22, 23. If the number of students sign up for it that makes it make, they would take place. Couple of them are AP seminars, AP classes, a topic in arts history, and a percussion ensemble, as we now have a drum line, which is really cool and loud.
Okay. So board members, any questions about these new courses? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Salute.
Ms. Ayers, did I see Ms. Haney? Thank you very much for the second. So board members, we've got a motion and a second in front of us. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Great, thank you. So that now brings us to what I think is the meat of our meeting.
Why we're here.
The items for board review, which includes our policies and more specifically, the one that we were, spent so much time on last meeting in regards to our admissions. So let's try and take the, first the slate of other policies.
Yeah, the policies, it's first read. Ms. Marshall has put together a very good sort of cheat sheet. If you click on it, these are almost exclusively, in fact, I think they are exclusively from V S B A policy updates. So they're probably policies that you've already seen in your own districts or are familiar with. And she has a grid down there that says V S B A policy updates, summer 2021, and just lists each one of them as well as a little blurb to the right that explains what's going on. In many cases, they're changing legal references, cross-reference updates. Some of them are mandatory review policies that we have to review every couple of years and just really looking at the policy and saying, yep, still works for us. But certainly, over the next month, you can review those. If you have any questions on any of the first read policy items, you can certainly direct them to me and I would be happy to answer them for you. But the policy committee did meet this summer and is putting these ones forward to you.
And board members, these are the very same policies we had on first read in August.
That's correct.
Yeah, do I? It's just that, it's not the whole list, it's just that?
No, no, there's, we pulled out separately the admissions.
Yeah, this is a separate other conversation.
And then this is everything else.
Okay, and I'm looking for the everything else.
So board members, are there any questions or comments in regards to these policies? If not, then we'll move forward with the policy 1030 R1 and R2 relating to the admissions of students. Dr. Lowery?
All right. Let me just give a real brief overview, and I'm sure that Mr. Smith did this last time around, but I was not able to follow along and just kind of want to let you know briefly how we got to this point, where we are that brought us to today. So back in 2009, there was a study that was commissioned by the University of Virginia to like, take a look at our admissions practices and related to equity and items that were consistent with that. And so that, among other things, sparked a conversation about, and certainly you've seen it now with other governor's schools as well over the past couple of years, about whether governor's schools' admissions policies are equitable and are, you know, where they need to be to provide most kids the opportunity to be able to access the programs. And for years, we kind of kicked things around and not a whole lot was done, to be very honest with you. There is an Office of Civil Rights complaint against Maggie Walker that's been in place for well over a decade now. It hasn't moved. No one's ever called me on it, but it's there. And it's something that every once in a while gets brought up. And every once in a while, I have to say, well, I haven't heard anything about it. But it was filed, and it was filed by an alumnus of Maggie Walker. And so that's also been out there. And so about two years ago, prior to last summer, but about the time that we were working on our strategic plan, the planning committee, which is made up of the gifted coordinators of each of our districts, decided to form a subcommittee to take a look at our admissions practices and equity and kind of did it in conjunction to support the strategic plan. They were working in parallel, but we were making sure that we were having everybody involved and having their voices heard. And we wanted to take a look at our admissions practices, which had pretty much not changed since 1991, when the governor's school was originally founded. And honestly, the long and the short of it, and this is, you know, to kind of just call it like it is, what came out of this, well, two things. What came out of this committee was a recommendation to change the weighting of how we do our assessments. And I'm going to walk you through that and explain why we thought it would be worth it. But they were also adamant, and this is, I support this concept 100%, that at the end of the day, the admissions selection process is the responsibility of the local districts. And there have been people that have said, well, wouldn't it be easier if just Maggie Walker did all this? And the answer is no, it would actually be quite a bit more difficult. And we often get compared to Thomas Jefferson High School in Fairfax County. And comparing us on an academic level is fine. That's, you know, we are, we're pretty sharp. They're very sharp. We're always chasing them. They're science people. We're social science people. But in terms of governance and policy and practice, they're completely different than us. They are a Fairfax County public school. They do have some slots for some of their adjacent counties, but their board, the Fairfax County School Board governs their school. So when you talk about a change being done at TJ, it's a local district that made that change. Now, the school happens to have a regional flavor to it, to a point, but the vast majority, and I'm talking 90% of their kids, are Fairfax County public school kids. So the difference between us is that when we work through things, we've got 14 different districts that all have an equal say in how the school is governed and managed. And so we need to come up with policies and practices that are at least acceptable on some level to all 14 districts. And that's a very different challenge than what Fairfax County has. So we have to take a much more deliberate approach. Fairfax County last year eliminated their assessment altogether. They had a very rigorous, tough admissions test for Thomas Jefferson. And my understanding was the students actually had to pay to take it. It was a $100 fee to take the test. We never did that. And obviously, we would never do that. And so we took a look at our assessment package. And the question was, in the year 2021, is this the best way to assess a child's success, ability for success at Maggie Walker? Because ultimately, that's what it is. Ultimately, all of the application process is to determine if a child is able to handle the rigor, the challenges, and has the desire and the motivation to be successful at a school like Maggie Walker. And so we took a look at our, at what we had in the past and we take a look at whether that was the best solution. And one thing kind of jumped out at us, and that was, there were two standardized tests that were required by policy. One of them was an ability test. And to be very honest, and this will upset some folks, there's nothing wrong with tests. There's nothing wrong with assessments. Assessments, if used properly with the right type of assessment, are valuable. Assessments, when used improperly and for the wrong purposes, can be very harmful. And one of the things that jumped out at us in the planning committee, and I do have a couple of members of the planning committee here, so if I go off the rails and I'm wrong, please just raise your hand and make sure I'm straight because you did the heavy lifting on this. One of the things that jumped out at us is that we had, our assessments were worth 35% of the, or 35 points, so to speak, of the 100 points that gave us that composite score for a kid. 25 of those points came from an aptitude test. Aptitude tests can be non-bias, they can be culturally neutral, there are plenty of good aptitude tests out there. 10 points came from an achievement test, which was a 10th grade social studies test. And to be honest, even before we started working on this, when I first got to Maggie Walker, I couldn't quite understand why at a school for government and international studies, we were given a 10th grade achievement test on something that we were going to teach them anyway. So why are we testing you on something that we're going to teach you through our global studies programs anyway? And that was the piece, and the achievement test is the piece that historically has been problematic. And so what the planning committee took a look at was not only our assessments, our actual tests per se, but also how we were doing writing samples, the kind of questions we were asking. Are we getting a holistic picture so that we can give these numbers back to the districts and you could take a look at them and determine which kids are going to be successful and which are not? And for some districts, it's not so hard. If you're a smaller district and you've got two freshman slots and you've got eight kids applying, you can do that. For some of our larger districts, like Conrako County, that have 40 slots but have 700 kids applying, it's much more challenging. So we kind of compromised on this idea of being able to move forward with doing something that made, that made sense from a research standpoint. And I've got a document that provides, you know, peer-reviewed research that talks about achievement tests, but come up with something that would improve our ability to get a better look at the kid without putting a barrier up there that all of us kind of didn't make sense. And what we came up with was the concept, and this is the crux of this whole policy, everything else is just little words here and there, but the crux of the policy is what are you actually doing to assess a child and what are the percentages? And so what we developed was overall, the change is minor. It's 10 points out of the entire 100 points that we're looking to shift. We would like to eliminate, we want to keep the aptitude test. We want to be able to continue to do an aptitude assessment and there are lots of really good, well-researched assessments we can use and continue to use that as 25 points, just like it has been in the past. We want to eliminate the achievement test as we really feel it shows no purpose, honestly, in terms of a true assessment, and take those 10 points and move them over to the writing sample and the, and make that 25 instead of where it was 15.
Is that going to be two prompts now?
Yes. The writing, the writing sample would increase. It would not just be one prompt. And the types of prompts we've used in the past have been things like, they tend to be government in nature but not controversial per se. Like I would not ask them on a writing prompt about a mask mandate or something crazy like that. We've done things like, should every American be required to vote as a piece of citizenship? You know, just long, and it's basically, the whole point is for them to be able to build an argument. So we would continue that. We would have a second prompt that would ask something maybe about, why do you want to come to Maggie Walker? What is it you want to get out of Maggie Walker? What experiences have you had that lead you up to Maggie Walker? These are just ideas. But something that was more personal, a personal assessment of the kid, because right now, our system that we have in place doesn't do anything to measure what the interest of the child is. It would still wait in the sense that 50% of the composite score would be done with onsite assessments. So they would still come to campus, and we're going to find a way to do that this year. Still come to campus, they're still going to take an assessment, they're still going to write with proctors. That was a little fuzzy this past year. Not totally sure who wrote all the essays. But we're going to have 50% still be on campus and 50% of the 100-point package would still be based on their transcripts, their recommendations, the rigor, what they've done in your districts up to that point. And then ultimately, this would yield a score. So the fundamental change is the removal of an achievement test, the addition of a more personalized essay that would be done onsite and timed. And here's the interesting thing. We ran the statistics of the last five freshman classes, I think it was five, was it five that Mike did?
Yes.
It was five. And ran it with the new model. And it changed virtually nothing. Now, of course, we don't have essays from them, so that piece is missing. But in terms of the assessment part, the aptitude removal of, if we removed the achievement test, what difference would it make? And it made very, very little difference in terms of the demographic makeup of the class. So the concern that we're trying to lower any kind of standard or change any kind of standard, it didn't, it didn't have that effect at all. And we've got the data to support that. And the other piece that goes with this, and I know that, because I've had some parents that have not been on favor of this, I'll be honest with you. There is absolutely no way, and I commit to you right now, and I'll do it publicly, I'll even look into the camera. There is no way that Maggie Walker is going to lower our standards and expectations of our students at all. The teachers would rebel, I would lose staff, parents would go crazy, the alumni would start marching around the building. It's not going to happen. What we may have to do is if this, if this yields kids that need a little more help, is we may have to increase our support systems to get those kids up to that standard. And that's something we're very capable of doing, very capable of doing and have a desire to do, teachers, that's what we like doing. We like helping people. So the concern that somehow we're going to see SAT scores drop and the number of national merit scholars drop and the AP scores drop, that's simply not going to happen because the teachers won't allow it. There is no way that those teachers at Maggie Walker would allow this to happen. So that's, that's the long and the short of it. It seems like an awful lot of work went into something that was, in the final outcome, relatively minor, but we really think it's going to make a difference and it's going to allow us to just get a better picture of your kids as they apply to Maggie Walker. I think I have run this thing as far as I can run it.
I think you've done a very good job explaining that. Thank you, Dr. Lowery. And board members, those of you who were here last month, we went through much of this discussion, but what we were missing was the scoring. And so we had decided to make this meeting, instead of an executive meeting, a full board meeting so that we all could be here, understand what the planning commission had come back with as far as scoring. So that was, that was the change between the last meeting and this one. However, the entirety of the subject is open for discussion. I know we had some lively discussion before and I've heard Mr. Axel already taking notes, so I'm certain he has something to say.
Absolutely.
But board members, let me open that up then. Is there anyone who has any comments or questions for Dr. Lowery or on the subject as a whole? Ms. Harris.
I applaud the effort of the planning committee and the subcommittee. And I, for one, am in favor of this. Looking at the weights that you all are putting now and giving the student an opportunity to show exactly what their interest is and what their strong points are from their personal perspective. And I applaud that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Ayers, I'm sorry.
I just have one comment and I don't know if this was at the last meeting or maybe during our committee meeting during the summer, that the standardized test was not a very good indicative of how successful the kids would be at Maggie Walker. So to put all of that weight on that, did was not, did not mean that they would be successful. So I'm really happy with the work that they did on this. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Mr. Axel?
The achievement test. What does that test?
What test were we using? Because they specifically never told me so that I couldn't answer this question.
No, because...
You know what I mean?
No, I want to know what achievement, what does achievement test test?
Sure. Achievement test tests what you learned specifically. So a good example is, if I take AP Biology and at the end of the AP Biology class, I take a big test that's got cells and terms and processes, it's assessing what I take. An achievement test is the test that 99% of us are familiar with when you think about school. At the end of a unit, we took a test. That was an achievement test. An aptitude test is determining whether or not you might be successful at something. A good example would be the ASVAB for the military. That's one that's been around for a while. Armed service vocational aptitude battery test. You know, if this gear goes this way and there's like 50 gears in between, which way does this gear go? And if a kid could do that, well, then he might be a good... And if a kid could do that, well, then he might be a good mechanic. So, it's, it's determining, it's legitimate questions. I mean, they're, they're real questions with correct answers, but it's determining whether or not you would have an aptitude for something. Giving me an engineering aptitude test, I would not do well. Giving me a law school aptitude test, I might, I might do better.
So, how, what would you describe the purpose of an achievement test to be?
Assessing prior knowledge.
Content.
Content, yeah. Specifically content.
So, basically, testing where you are. What do you know? Is that fair?
Yeah. Oh, specific content.
For one, yeah. In this case, I believe you said it was 10th grade social studies.
Yeah. 10th grade social studies. So, it would be, it would be a test that you could...
Going to eighth graders, just want to make sure.
Yeah. It'd be a test that you would expect a 10th grader who's completed social studies to be able to do well on.
And we're going to replace that with an aptitude.
Well, the aptitude test has always been there. It's not moving.
Help me understand what we're changing, because one, there's a couple of things that bothered me.
Sure.
Uh, one, we didn't have, at last meeting, we didn't have a, a plan to go to. It was like, we're dropping this, but what are we, what are we replacing it with? Now, today, we do. Okay? So, that's very helpful. Uh, but one, just a comment you made, and that I agree with. We are different than TJ, and we are different than everybody. You know, we're not a typical public school where all kids come here. I mean, we, there's a difference. And, you know, and the reason, I think, you know, that's why I'd have to go back to what our mission statement is at the school, what is our purpose and mission as a school? Now, if we're trying to become a general public school, I don't think that's the mission. So, we have to be, I think we have to be careful to say, okay, if I'm for, I hate to call gifted, but if I'm for...
Intellectually curious.
Yeah, intellectually curious, yeah. Children, then that's who I want to draw.
Right.
I don't want to draw everyone, because if you're not that intellectually curious person, I'm setting you up to fail.
Exactly.
You're not going to make it.
I agree.
You know? I can bring you in, and then you're going to fail. So, I've always viewed, right or wrong, I've always viewed, that was the purpose of application process, was to say, okay, I'm not trying to make this a school that's for everybody, because it, now, correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't a school for everybody.
No.
Am I right in that?
You are correct.
Okay? So, therefore, some things that work for Hannover County as a general, Patrick Henry High School, as a general public high school, won't work here. Okay? They're different. And that's, that's what I want to be cautious of, because some of the things I've heard before were, appeared to me to be an effort to make this school a general, more of a general public school, which I don't think that's what we want to do.
It is not. And if I could just respond to a couple of your points, and they're well, they're excellent. I, I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. We're not a general school. You all have wonderful, comprehensive high schools. I was the principal of Tucker High School for five years. Loved it, loved every second. I chose to come to Maggie Walker for the reasons you are specifically saying. What an opportunity to be around an environment that is, that is intellectually curious, that's, you know, advanced, yeah, there's, that's what drew me. That's what drew me out of Tucker. And, and leaving Henrico County and leaving their retirement prep program was a leap of faith. But I saw opportunity. The, the achievement test, the removal of, of an achievement test as part of the criteria, I don't think is going to change. Well, I know for a fact, it's not going to change, um, that, that child, the kind of kid coming, but what we have lacked in our admissions process is any opportunity for a kid to explore and explain their own personal giftedness. Giftedness is not a, you know, some people are gifted in math, some people are gifted in social studies, some people are gifted in the arts, kinesthetics and whatnot. There's no opportunity for us to understand that unless it was social studies. You better be gifted in social studies if you want to come to Maggie Walker. Well, art, strangely enough, we're ranked as one of the top STEM schools in the country. How that's possible, I don't know. I got an email yesterday wanting me to buy a plaque to put up on the school to celebrate our STEM-ness. And I'm thinking, well, that was just kind of accidental, but okay, cool. I was a byproduct. So, although we, and we kind of struggle with that, to be honest, internally, gifted, you know, a governor's school for government and international studies, but we've got this killer engineering program in partnership with VCU. And one of the questions I get the most, honestly, from some of the bigger districts when I go out to the schools, what do you got for the math and science kid? And have to explain that to them. So, the removal of an achievement test in social studies while increasing the ability for kids to self-describe their desires, their giftedness, their stuff, that's going to be a benefit to us. And it's not going to, and then again, as I, as I stated at the outset, you're ultimately going to make the decision on who you send us. So, if you are choosing to take an admissions policy where you're going to take a certain number from each middle school, or you're going to take this and then have a second level of, you know, an at-large, that is your business. At the end of the day, you have a sheet that you send us that says, here are the ten kids I'm sending you. We say, thank you. We'll send them our orientation packages. That's, that's critical, because the districts are different, and each of you has a different way of doing things, and that, that's part of our charter that needs to be respected from the outset.
If I may add.
Oh, please.
There is always the ability for a locality to apply other measurements as they see fit.
That is correct.
Whether that be an achievement test, or whatever you, you can creatively come up with. Y'all are, y'all, y'all are the professionals at being Hannover. So, well.
I'm just saying, I'm a piece of profession.
Collectively. Somebody may be pulling a little harder at the yoke.
There you go, there you go, there you go.
But the, the point is, is that this is information that the school is then providing to the various school, participating school divisions, so that then you can make your choice. And this is, the proposal is to remove the achievement test, which we know now is a 10th grade social studies exam, sort of end-of-course exam type of thing, versus a writing prompt that allows the applicant to demonstrate self.
If I may, uh, because y'all, we've discussed this for some time. And I, I, you know, and I'm sure, I'm probably not surprised, many in this room where I stand on, what, what concerned me was when I began to hear comments like, uh, these tests are barriers. Uh, there's barriers, we need to increase a typical, a certain demographic in the school, and we need to remove barriers so they can be, uh, included. That's why I went back and I asked, uh, Mr. Lowery how, you know, and again, I thought I was in sync with what this school was. And it's not a typical, it's school for everybody. So, when we, I get concerned when I begin to hear pressure come to this board to make it a school for everybody and remove certain things, because I don't think that's our mission, and I don't think it would go well for the school. Because if we do things to be, to, I was going to be blunt, if we do things because of outside political pressures or other pressures, okay, and lessen, uh, the, uh, rigor of the school or lessen what, you know, what Bob said brought him here, or Rob Skyes said brought him here, was the fact, you have these intellectually curious, you know, not discriminatory, they're just, I don't care what color, everybody, the color has no, doesn't matter, but intellectually curious. But, you know, the, when we begin to make suggestions, we need to change our application process to increase, uh, things to remove barriers that personally I don't see as barriers. I see as, what, we are testing you to see if you can make it. Because if we, if we don't, what would be our second option? I mean, I would suggest to you that if, if there isn't a certain level at this school, the option is, and I'm going to be probably too blunt here, why would Hannover send our kids here?
I am acutely aware of that. And one of the things, no, one of the, anyone, anyone on the staff here in the room has heard me say, and I don't know how many leadership team meetings, we have got to provide, and I'll use the sort of an economic term, a product for our partner districts that they see value in. And I mean, I've got, with, with the greatest of respect, partners from King and Queen County, that's a long drive. Dinwiddie, Colonial Heights, Petersburg, that's a long drive for a kid and a family, in many cases, the families. We better have something of value, and we better be able to provide something that through economy of scale, you might not be able to provide, because we have enough kids to make a class. You might not have enough kids to have a German five class. I do. So, we want to provide something that is of value. And I, my nightmare, what wakes me up at three o'clock in the morning, is one of our districts saying, we just don't see the value, and we're going to take our, we're going to try to do what you're doing in our home district. And I'll be honest, there are districts in this room right now that could potentially do that. So, I absolutely am acutely aware of the mission of the school, of the value of what we must provide for our partner districts to be able to maintain this beautiful thing that we have going on. So, and again, if our scores drop, and I don't want to come down to scores, but let's just say, if our standards drop, and if we start seeing the school slide, I know darn well, you all are not going to tolerate me sitting here. And I want to kind of ride this thing out for a little bit longer, because it's been a lot of fun. And it's been a great fit for me personally. So, I can assure you, as clear as I can make it, we're not going to do anything that's going to lower the standards and the reputation of our school.
So, board members, any other questions or comments?
I'm just, if I...
Please do.
It just sounds to me, I'm here to this conversation, obviously, so getting up to speed, forgive me. It sounds to me that the change you're talking about directly addresses the concern you have, that instead of saying to these students, tell us what you've learned already in your home district, is saying, show us what you would be particularly adept at learning here. And so, that's not at all in conflict with, uh, you know, sort of goals that a home district has, but it sounds, I, I need to...
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, Mickey? Hang on, let me get you so we can see you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Uh, can anybody else?
Yes. Well...
Um, I'll just provide just a little bit of feedback. I did run this by our board members, and surprisingly enough, I didn't get much feedback, but, um, just felt like, based on, um, what we talked about last meeting and what, um, the discussion today, Henrico doesn't have a problem with these changes, but full disclosure, we are also looking at our admissions, um, process, evaluation forms, making probably some changes coming up. They're kind of waiting for this meeting to happen to see whether we approve this or not before we move forward, but, uh, we're looking at a combination of ideas, of ways to, uh, make more opportunities available, and that's the key messaging that we are focusing on, is making sure we have not denied an opportunity to a kid who is capable of coming to the school. So, for, um, you know, you just want to be sure at the end of the day that those kids that have that ability to be at Maggie Walker were given a fair shot to get there. And so, that's what we're focusing on, and so, I, I appreciate, Bob, you telling us that, you know, that, that this is not a, a thing we need to worry about as far as standards, because I think you're right. You know your clients, so to speak, and you know that that's all of us, and, and, um, there are school divisions, there are places that would say, you know what, we, uh, for example, Petersburg, there, there might be a governor's school closer, and so that they have more spots in. So, I get that. But, but I appreciate the dialogue, and, and just to let you know that we're working on some more, similar things.
So, board, board members, I'm not certain that everybody could hear her because of the speaker. Could you hear at that end? Good. Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
The middle did not.
There were a couple of nods in there.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry. I saw hands up in the, what I thought was the far corner. Okay. Well, uh, I, I certainly cannot be as eloquent as Mrs. Ogden, but essentially, what she was saying was that she had this discussion with her board, that nobody on her board had an issue, and Henrico being the second largest participant in our school, nobody there had an issue with the proposed changes here. However, they were continuing to examine their own criteria, Henrico's specific criteria for admission here, and they were essentially watching and waiting to hear what we do before they tried to refine their processes there. She went on to say several other things, but I think that the salient point there is that she was saying that she and her board did not have an issue with the proposed changes to the admissions.
And this is a first read. This is, you have time to take it back to your boards, to kick it around, get more input, bring it back before we take the final vote on it. There's, this is, this is, there's time to be able to get more information if you need it.
Right. So... Do you have a, do you have a sample of an aptitude test I could take to my board?
I can find one for you.
Just kind of, I'm saying...
Not, not on me.
No, 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 no. No, I'm saying, because...
Right here. Yes, I absolutely...
So, you know, I can imagine, that's going to be one of my first questions. Well, you know, we're kind of aptitude, well, you know, I don't know.
I'll get one for you.
Sure.
I see Mr. Full fishing around in his briefcase. He may, may have one.
I actually do.
That's really scary.
Yeah. Well, thank you, one and all. Assuming that there is no further comment or question about the subject, I'd like to then move forward to our information items.
I have two information items. Uh, one is just kind of letting you know what's going on at Maggie Walker in terms of celebrating Hispanic-American Heritage Month. Uh, and Wendy DeGroot, our, our librarian, has also got some hot links there that can take you to some places, uh, if you want to see what's going on at the school, as well as what's going on in the community. And then also, just a, and this is an annual notification, of the school's policy and regulations are available on our website. Every year, we have certain annual notifications that we have, and there's a spot on the website where people can click and get to all of that information as well.
Okay. Uh, so then next, that brings us to the superintendent's steering committee report. Dr. Rayly, did you have an opportunity to meet this morning?
We did not meet, no, sir.
Okay. Well, that was the quickest report ever. Appreciate that. So, then that takes us to new business. Uh, Dr. Lowery, I'm unaware of any new business.
I'm not aware of any.
Board members, is there any new business you'd like to bring forward? Hearing none, then, uh, let's see, I don't believe we have any need for a closed meeting, uh, and therefore, no need for a certification. Are there any announcements beyond the plethora that you've already made?
I think I've done enough.
Fantastic. So, then, board members, this brings me to my very favorite item on the agenda. Would anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, 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 Mr. Chairman?
It's Mr. Axel. I would take that as a, as a motion. Any second out there?
Second.